To the February 10th, 2021 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Will staff take roll?
Poll has been taken.
And we have minutes from December 9th. Are there any additions or changes for those? None being brought up? Any correspondence, Mr. Meesmer or Ms. Cooper?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say hello to all the commissioners and welcome you back into 2021 with Planning Commission. We've got a few projects coming up in the year ahead of us. We are finalizing our responses to comments on the Shoreline Master Program. That will be coming back before you shortly. And I'd like to let you know also, we're finalizing the third draft of the Critical Areas Ordinance, which will be going to the City Council in March. With that, no other correspondence other than that related to items on the agenda.
Thank you so much. Our new business tonight is an open record pre-decision hearing, 2020-0002, the Bayside Moorage Marina Project. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Let me see if I can remember. Okay, everybody see my... So that's the wrong screen. Matt? Remind me how to get the correct screen to show.
I feel like we're seeing the right one. We're seeing the presentation of the SDP.
You are? Okay, because for me, I'm... Okay, good. Perfect. Technical difficulties. It's been a while. Thank you, commissioners and members of the public for attending tonight's hearing regarding the Bayside Moorage Marina replacement. Tonight is an open record pre-decision hearing. Because of the value of this project, it bumps it up to a city council decision. So tonight, we'll accept public testimony and Planning Commission will deliberate on their recommendation to City Council. The applicant for this project is Marine Floats Corporation. The landowner is Jeff Wright for Bayside Moorage Marina. The proposed use is marina and boat moorage. The zoning for this project is marine mixed use. And the location is 2410 Skyline Way and parcel number P32370. Prior meetings to this evening were Development Review Group, which was mandatory, and a neighborhood meeting. February 10th, tonight is again the Planning Commission Open Record Pre-Decision Hearing. And we have the final closed-record decision hearing tentatively scheduled for March 8th, 2021. A complete description of this proposal is the applicant has applied for a shoreline substantial development permit to permit the removal, demolition, and disposal of the existing creosote pilings and floating marina for a total of 7,968 square feet. Forty-three galvanized steel piling will be installed along with the new floating docks. The docks will use Envirocrete system and will be fabricated into Tacoma and towed to the Bayside Moorage Marina for installation. The existing pier and ramps will be reused and redected with new grating if necessary. This project is a like-for-like replacement within the existing footprint using contemporary designs to reduce the environmental impact. You can see an aerial shot of the marina. All three arrows point to the three docks that are associated with this marina and are proposed for replacement. The history of this project stated the applicants held a mandatory pre-application meeting with city staff on June 2nd, 2020. The neighborhood meeting, open to the public for comment, was held on August 5th, 2020. The formal application was submitted on September 23rd and determined to be complete on November 6th. Noticing for the notice of application was posted on November 11th. And the notice of hearing was posted on January 20th of 2021. The SEPA determination was issued on January 13th. During the public comment period, we received one public comment with concerns about SEPA Environmental Checklist and noise and vibration and related to pile driving in the neighboring condominium building. One agency comment was also received from Ecology in regards to a Model Toxic Control Act cleanup site in the vicinity. Copies of these comments was included in the packet for your review. And the public commenter also re-submitted similar comments to the record for the official hearing this evening. And those were sent by email to the commission this evening and will be added to the packet as well for review. Critical areas in the vicinity of the project include Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area. And a habitat survey dated July 16th, 2020 was submitted that identified no significant populations of listed species in the vicinity. The project was also designed to minimize impacts as much as feasible with the contemporary building materials to gain... to result in a net gain of ecological conditions. And then this is the map of their official habitat survey where they conducted transects, underwater transect, scuba transects, to evaluate the vegetation growth in the vicinity of the dock area. And you can see the numbers and quantities of species that was observed. The zoning for this property is marine mixed use. The designation is provided a special mix of commercial, cultural, recreational, and residential uses in a high amenity area along the waterfront with special waterfront relationship. The design of uses is intended to emphasize the unique marine setting by providing marine access and views for the public spaces. And as you can see in the zoning allowed use chart, marinas and boat moorage is a permitted use in the marine mixed-use zone. For the Shoreline Management Act and the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program, proposed developments that lie within 200 feet of a shoreline of statewide significance requires a review under the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program. The subject proposal is located entirely in the Aquatic Shoreline Environmental Designation. According to Table 5.1 in the SMP, marinas are a permitted use in the Aquatic Shoreline Environmental Designation, which equates to a shoreline substantial development permit review. You can see just an area map of where the project is located in the western portion of Padago Island, Skyline Marina, and Flounder Bay. And a little close-up of a parcel here at the tip of the jetty. The proposed site plan for the project. Again, it is a like-for-like replacement in the exact same footing. Very little actual construction again is going to occur. They'll mostly be built off-site into Tacoma and then just towed in place, towed to the area and anchored in place. Except for, of course, the piling replacement. A little more detailed view of each of the docks. Dock A, Dock C, and Dock B. And so this new floats with concrete and fiberglass grating panels. You can see the length of the fingers. And this says a total of 13 new steel piles for Dock A. Just an 80-foot length for Dock C. Again, the concrete and fiberglass grating panels and four new piles for Dock C. And then Dock B is the more complicated design with multiple reaches and fingers. 25 new steel pile and again the same concrete fiberglass gridded pattern. Existing site condition photos, because we weren't able to do an onsite site visit. This just gives you an idea of what Dock C looks like currently. And again, the gangway ramps are going to stay. And it'll just be the floats and pilings. And B Dock located here. And A Dock. And you can see again what was called out that potentially some of the decking for the gangways will be replaced if needed. Gangway A has some wood and metal grating as opposed to B and C, which is all metal grating at the moment. So potentially, some of the surface will be replaced, but the majority of the gangways will... Structurally, it will stay. And so what does it mean to remove the entire floats? And what do they look like now as opposed to what they're going to look like? So again, ramps will remain in place, but all of these old concrete floats will be removed and replaced with... You can see, this is a good picture of what the concrete and fiberglass gridding. This is the open, light-penetrating fiberglass griding that allows water and light to penetrate, which is the environmental improvement to the area. So again, for a total of 7,968 square feet of total float replacement. And likewise, all of the creosote pilings will be removed from the project and replaced with new steel piles, galvanized steel piles for a total of 33 new piles. So in the staff report, staff analyzed the project and requirements under the different code sections. And we've decided that it meets all of the requirements. And the recommendations and conditions for approval include... I'll just briefly summarize what the conditions of approval are. The scope of the project shall not exceed that set out in the shoreline permit application and must meet the scope of the approved site plan that was shown in a previous slide. A FEMA Floodplain Habitat Assessment Report must be submitted. And building permits must be obtained with the City of Anacortes prior to work. The Habitat Assessment Report is submitted at the time of building permit. All applicable state, local, and federal permits must be secured. They've already received the Fish and Wildlife HPA permit, which has been provided... A copy has been provided to us. Development shall comply with the mitigation measures listed in the SEPA, mitigated determination of nonsignificance. Hours of construction are limited to 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., seven days a week, unless a noise variance is obtained. Based on tides and in-water work, the potential for work outside of this is possible and that they will just have to obtain a noise variance in order to do so. And that goes to City Council for approval. Noise levels must not exceed those standards as established in RCW and Washington State Administrative Code. Applicant landowners shall comply with all federal statutes included Nature Species Act, Clean Water Act, Marine Mammal Protection Act, and so forth. The project shall comply with all of our Shoreline Master requirement regulations as reviewed in this document. And then there's timelines for construction. Must start within two years and it is good for a five-year window. Staff also reserves the rights to supplement these conditions with information raised as of this report in this hearing. Staff's recommendation to the Department of Planning and Community or from the Department of Planning, Community, and Economic Development is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Shoreline Substantial Development Permit for City Council to review as well with the conditions as listed in the staff report dated February 3rd, 2021. There's not a whole lot of detail for us to really cover, but we have representatives of the project here to answer questions and respond to any considerations that come up through the following discussions. So at this point, I don't have much more to present, so I'll turn it over for the hearing and deliberation.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Do any commissioners have questions or clarifications from the staff?
Yes, I... Mr. Chair, I do.
Go ahead.
To the public comment that was provided in the package primarily pertain to concerns regarding noise and then through the drilling process, vibration, et cetera. And with respect to the noise, have the 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. timeframe, is that acceptable to the people of the homeowners association at Bayview? Did we get any feedback on that? So that's one question. And I was also interested in the process for the removal of the existing creosite pilings and decking, et cetera, and the transportation away. I didn't see that in the package material. I could have missed it, but that would seem to be also a major effort.
Perhaps project staff can answer your second question.
Hi, I can answer that second question. So when we do pile removal, we use the EPA's best management practices. We use the construction barge and everything's accessed through the water and then a crane pulls it out. And then what we'll do is we'll unhook everything after the pile has been removed. And then we'll tow it back to Tacoma where we'll demolish it basically and dispose of it enough land facilities. And then we'll tow in with the construction barge the new dock system.
Okay, that's great. That's super. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper, who do you recommend respond to the question about the noise levels and duration?
That's a good question. Most of what Tabitha just just mentioned, they did do a written response to that question. And are you able to see... I moved... Are you able to see this email now? So most of what she said, after responding to Mr. Rutledge's concerns about noise and vibration, the project does not anticipate to do any damage to adjacent property. We, as a company, follow all best management practices required for various regulating agencies. No work will commence until all regulating agencies have issued approval. We will follow regulations put in place and will minimize adverse effects to the best of our ability. Piling removal and piling replacement is a pretty common practice. It's a widespread activity that's going on right now as most people are removing their creosote piles and replacing it with more environmentally friendly and much more long-term, long-lasting, galvanized. And the technology for pile driving or vibrational placement is much more construction-friendly, neighborhood-friendly than it used to be. Staff's response also is that this is a commercial marine zone. It isn't technically a residential zone. And so it's meant for mixed marine uses, industrial uses, commercial uses. So a reasonable amount of noise above just a residential amount is expected in this area as well. So that's staff's response in addition to the construction company's response.
And how were those responses received?
I'm sorry? Received by whom?
The homeowner... Mr. Rutledge of the homeowners association.
This was from Marine Floats, was submitted by email. And today, I'm just providing that testimony tonight, staff's response.
Okay. Thank you.
Any question?
Gary, I have a question. Actually, I have a couple of questions, and most are mine. I just wanted to reconfirm that the 7,900 square feet was the surface decking? And that's presented as square footage as opposed to cubic in terms of demolition and recycling? And that leads me to my second question with the existing concrete decking. Is that going to be recycled down in Tacoma?
So yeah, it is square footage. So that includes all of the float surfaces and fingers that are associated with them. And then if Logan wants to jump in on how we dispose of that, that would be perfect. You're on, you, Logan.
Thank you, Tabitha. So unfortunately, the way these docks are built doesn't allow us to recycle the concrete. They're... The... It's easy to look at them and think that it's a big chunk of concrete. What it really is is a big chunk of foam with a thin layer of concrete.
With a thin layer.
Yeah. And so what happens is... Because trust me, it would be much better for us to be able to recycle the concrete. But as you try to separate the concrete from the foam, enough of the foam material stays embedded in the concrete that the concrete recyclers will not accept.
Okay. No, excellent. No, that's...
Unfortunately, we can't recycle it.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to figure out if there was, if it wasn't bettered or not. So thank you for the answer. And that was... That's all my questions.
Any other question? Mr. Jurewski, your mic? Any other questions? None being brought forward. I think we will move on to open the public hearing. Staff, do we have people ready to present? Am I... Is my mic working okay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Matt, I think we have one person that's standing by. Mr. Rutledge?
Yes, we have Jerry Rutledge in the office, but I wasn't sure if he wanted to speak. We usually do the raise hands if they want to speak. Should I just allow him to talk?
Shall we go ahead?
Yeah, let's do that.
Mr. Rutledge, I've allowed you to talk. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you can. If not, we can disable it.
Yes, this is Jerry Rutledge. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Fine, thank you. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to comment. I did send a previous email that wanted to reiterate some of our concerns. I'm on the board of the East Bay Condominium Association. And we're at 2411. My particular residence is within 50 feet of the top of the wall where this construction takes place. Our building foundations run around 50 to 60 feet continuously around the construction area for the 16 units that we have. We do have concerns about the noise, particularly about the 7:00 a.m. and the 10:00 p.m. And the comment that due to tides, there may even be later at night activities. I admit that I have not been around marine pile driving, but I've been around a lot of pile driving associated with buildings. And I know that the vibration and the noise level are very disturbing. I do not know the length of pile that needs to be driven into the substrate. It did not show on the drawings that I was able to view. So I don't know how intensive or the duration of the noise is that we are to expect or the level of vibrations. or the level of vibrations due to the resistance of the piling. So we want to go on record that we are concerned about the noise. We're concerned about the hours of operations and we're concerned about potential damage of cracks to our drywall, asphalt services, foundations, underground utilities, et cetera. We also have some concerns about the, the traffic in the area. We share common access in parking with the marina. And we would like to be assured that we'll be able to coordinate any activities that we, that would tend to close off our access or access to our own vendors, mail deliveries, utilities, et cetera. We also wanted to make a comment that I did read in some of the contractors notes of their work that they're going to do some utility relocate and upgrade. And we would also like to make sure that if there's any anticipated disruption to our utility services, fire protection services, water, electric, et cetera, that there's some sort of notification process to us ahead of time before they would be interrupted. There are storm drains which are in the parking and lay down areas of the construction. Some of those storm drains go through a settling mechanism which is on our property. And that discharge is open into the bay. We would like to make sure there's some type of protection around those storm drains of any contamination or oils, et cetera, that might occur due to the construction vehicles or lay down of materials. And I think that's about the extent of what we have. We know that there's positive aspects to this project. And we realize that, but we are concerned about the items I just brought up. And again, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Are there any other commenters for this evening? Mr. Meeser, I'm thinking that perhaps some of this, some of the concerns may be addressed by the planning or by the permitting.
Or you muted yourself.
Sorry about that. So would it be advisable for the city planning staff to respond to some of those questions? And perhaps the, the builders' project staff to respond to others?
Mr. Chair, yes, I agree. I can respond to some of that. So the permitting processes with the city, which include building permit, will require that they provide us with a work plan for best management practices such as the storm drain catch spaces would be provided with socks and appropriate measures to prevent any, any fuels or petroleum products or anything like that. The contractor would have to have that plan available for WDFW. They've probably already provided it to them. As far as water or any other utility disruptions, we require that the contractors notify all the abutting property owners that would be affected by that, whether it's water or power. So that, that's a given during the permitting process. And as far as, you know, noise and vibration, I think that's something that the contractor could probably address. The hours of work is, that's the standard hours of work for any construction project. If it were an apartment building, a single family residence, you know, that's typical. And for in-water use, the contractor can talk a little bit about how that works with the title influences as well. If in fact, they had to work any other timeframes than that, if after 10 o'clock, then they would have to submit a noise variance as Ms. Cooper mentioned. And that would go to city council with public comment. So I think the contractor and/or applicant could talk a bit more about the vibrations and noise as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, Tabitha.
Also, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would also like the contractor, so this, the concern about land access was brought up in the neighborhood meeting as well. And we had a lengthy discussion that the primary, the, most of the work is going to be waterward from barges and, and boats and from the water side of things. But the contractor could probably talk about how much of that is going to be land access? If there's going to be employees that will be driving to the site and parking? Or if they'll all be accessing the site from water, boats and barges as well? What the expected differentiation between land access and use and water access and use will be?
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Mr. Brown, did you have further comments?
Yeah, I can, I can, I think, speak to most of those issues. I have a lot of hope at least that a lot of those concerns will ultimately, you know, not, not become an issue. I think that the, specifically the noise level, while the, the noise level actually changes for this vibratory pile driving based on what the substrate is like. So if we're, you know, if we're hitting sand, you know, it, it tends to be actually surprisingly quiet for, for the pile driving. But if we hit, you know, a harder ground, the, the steel pile does vibrate some and create some noise. But like I said, I would, I would be surprised if ultimately it does become a, a big issue for the neighbors. The timing question, you know, as a, my preference is to have as much flexibility as possible to ensure that we, you know, get in and get out and get this project completed successfully. But that said, it is, in, in, just due to the danger of working around the water, we tried very, very hard not to work during any non daylight hours. So it would be very unlikely that we would need to work into that 10 o'clock hour. It would also be very unlikely that we would need to ask for a variance for additional working hours. I just, I don't see that being an issue. The, the question about access and material lay down? The, I'm not, to be frank, I'm not 100% certain how many spots are designated for the marina itself versus for the residents. My, my assumption is that our work crews will actually take up less square footage of that parking lot than the regular marina users may. Because obviously during this process, the regular marina users will not be there. The, we're not talking about, once again, under normal circumstances, you know, things change during a construction process, but under normal circumstances, we're not talking about bringing any materials on the road. Meaning no material lay down area would be necessary at all. And that the only vehicles that would be on the site would be regular transportation of our workers there on a daily basis. And that will even be fairly minimal compared to most construction processes because so much of it is to be built offsite. And then so much of it is to be demolished offsite. So the, you know, I, you know, I think we're probably talking about maybe a peak of seven or eight vehicles. You know, one thing that's a little bit unique right now on our job sites is that we have, we have more vehicles because we're, you know, trying to do less carpooling with COVID. So, you know, that's, that's a little bit of a consideration, but we're, a typical project at the peak is probably only going to have seven or eight people on it at, at any one time. So I think that's a relatively safe figure. Was there any, were there any other issues that I was, that I'm missing out on?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Meeser. Perhaps, Mr. Brown, you could address the question that the commenter brought up about potential damage or drywall cracks, et cetera, to the buildings?
Yeah, you know, to be frank, I just, I don't even know how to address that. I think that the, that it's somewhat unfounded. I don't, I don't, it's not something that happens. It's a regular activity, as the planner said. It's a thing that we do throughout the Puget Sound on a daily basis in all locations, close to all sorts of buildings. The, the, the likelihood of something like that, I would say is zero.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any, any other information for the good of the order before we close the hearing and resume discussion with the commission? None being offered? We will close the public hearing at this time and open this up for just planning commission discussions. Any members of the commission have comments or, or input here?
I'm curious. How long, how long will it take, like the, the noise and the vibrations? It's, it's a part of the project. How long do you think it will take to install all of this? How much, how much will that pain, that quote pain be?
So, you know, there's, there's two parts of the process in regards to, that, that would create any significant amount of noise. And that's the pile removal and then the pile installation. The pile removal typically doesn't have any substantial noise. Basically, the sound of a generator running is the maximum amount of noise that you're going to hear from that. Especially because they're wood pile, they don't, they don't transmit that, that sound. The, the pile installation, it ranges, and, and a lot of this is, you know, site specific. But usually when I am anticipating a, you know, how many piling we, we can drive in a day, usually I would say seven. Each one of those piling is actually only being actively driven typically for a half an hour, which I think is, is probably, on the gracious side, it's probably more like 10 to 15 minutes. But maybe up to a half an hour depending on how hard the soils are. So what we're talking about is, Tabitha, how many piling are there?
There will be 43 new installed.
Yeah, so we're talking about roughly a week or, you know, work week of, of pile driving. And during that period of time on each individual day, we're talking about roughly, you know, three hours spaced out periodically of actual driving noise.
Is your question answered, Ms. Ruther?
Yes, thank you, that was perfect, that was perfect, thank you.
Great, any other questions or comments from commissions, commission? So do I hear a motion from a commission member?
This is my first real meeting. I move that we, we move the proposal to city council with a recommendation of due pass.
Do, may I add a clarification?
Yes.
Subject to the conditions defined by the city staff?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I will second Mr. Molino's motion. Can we take roll and, and have a vote? Mr. Jurewski?
I vote to approve.
Mr. Cora?
Approve.
Ms. Ruther?
Approve.
Mr. Molino?
Approve.
Ms. Mark?
She's not present.
Mr. Gray?
Approve.
And I approve also. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Meeser.
Just like to thank everybody for showing up this Wednesday night. We don't have anything on our agenda for next Wednesday for the next regularly scheduled meeting. But we will certainly let you know as soon as we're ready to bring Mr. Ryan's master program in.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to chat about before we leave, if that's okay?
Excellent.
Well, one of the things, the, the questions are relatively unrelated. But at the last meeting, we talked about when we were going to have an opportunity to discuss, debate, have a dialogue about some of the issues associated with the SMP. Because we had had four successive presentations, but we really didn't have time for, or the opportunity, if you will, to kick the tires on some of the, some of the issues that were raised. So that's one question. I assume, and Mr. Meeser, you brought the fact up that we're going to have another meeting on the SMP, that's the next thing forthcoming. So I assume we'll be, will we be able to do it then? Because I know there's been an update made to the SMP. And are we going to have a chance then to go into depth about some of the questions we have? So that's the one question I, that's the first one. The second one was, when will we get involved with the roundabout discussion? And Commercial Avenue, Commercial Avenue and 12th Street, the spur. There was an open house video, if you will. You can see some of the, some of the, some of the discussions, different alternatives. But as a planning commission, wouldn't it behoove us to start talking about that? Before decisions are made, et cetera, and looking, talking about the different alternatives, different options, drivers for this potential requirement? Is that in the, is that on the agenda, if you will, in the near future? Is that in the, is that on the agenda, if you will, in the near future?
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please do, Mr. Meesmer.
So um Shoreline Master Program, what what's happening right now on that is that we are providing responses to all the comments that we've received. Those will be distributed to um Department of Ecology along with potential revisions to the draft. And once Ecology has taken a look at that and said, yeah, okay, we agree, or no, we need you to change this, then we'll be scheduling a meeting with the Planning Commission to go over all the comments, address your concerns, and have further discussion about all the comments that came in. Um, and we may end up having two or more meetings on the SMP. Just depends on how the evening goes through the comments. We received right around 68 written comments on the SMP. And so that's, it's going to take probably a couple of meetings just to go through everything and and make sure, as you say, we kicked the tires and got it right before we move it on to city council. Um, in regards to the capital project for 12th and Commercial, a potential roundabout, um, Planning Commission doesn't get involved with those. That's um not a permit type. That's purely a contractual issue decided by the city council and Public Works Director. So at this point, it's, you know, out at the public to get comments uh in regards to, okay, well, which direction does the community think we should go? And then the city council makes the ultimate decision on what design they feel is best based on the comments received.
Well, I guess my my only response to that, and thank you, Mr. Meesmer, is that's, that's really disappointing. Because when you think of a planning commission, you would like to think that we would be involved in major changes. And I would consider this one, obviously, because it affects on, to the future of the city. And as we, our work, it appears to be focused on, you know, like you said, permitted projects, that pretty much when they come to us are, because your staff does an excellent job, quite frankly, they're pretty well much saucered and blown. And there, we really have very little contribution. So I was thinking on something like the roundabout project, where you're looking at a whole lot of vested interests in the community via, you know, various businesses, et cetera, that in the community, that that would be an ideal place for us to bring our expertise that each of us individually share and to the party there. And it's a meaningful, it's a, it's a substantive decision to be made. Just my few cents worth, as it were. Thank you for the time.
Um, and if I may, Mr. Chair? So a lot of um work the Planning Commission does and will be doing more of is um a lot of policy discussion and discovery. I like to call it discovery. You know, we would, staff would prepare a draft and have public meetings with the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission ultimately make a decision to the city council. A good example of that, um, the comprehensive plan, the transportation comprehensive plan. And there are a couple of others that, you know, would be coming before the Planning Commission. Development regulation changes, all policy decisions that the Planning Commission would be involved with. So Planning Commission has a huge role in how the community is, will be shaped. I understand what you're saying with the, with the potential roundabout, which they have not decided yet which way they're going on that. City Council is still, still listening to the comments and deciding. So that that's a ways out yet. Understood.
Um, could we have maybe the, when a decision is made, could we have the city engineer come explain it to us? Because I've worked as a planner for, you know, about 10 or 12 years and have a planning degree. And I do think transportation is this big driver, right, for land use? So um if, whether or not we're, you know, kind of in the pipeline for the decision-making, it will affect all of our decisions, you know, down the line. So um I I as a citizen made a comment, you know, at Open House. So I would, you know, invite you guys to make comments as well. But um it might be nice, even if it's, you know, later, later on down, down the process to to have, just so we can all, like, absorb it in a big-picture way.
Absolutely. I can talk with our city engineer and public works director, and uh we can arrange a presentation if you like. But we'll do that as soon as possible.
I think that would be very useful. I don't recall exactly, but I went back and read through the, basically, the authorities granted to the Planning Commission. And in terms of the actual authority the commission has, it's fairly fairly specified. But I think there must be a lot of room to maneuver here about using the Planning Commission as a resource.
Um, absolutely. And I think that, you know, having a presentation here at at the Planning Commission level from the city engineer and the design consultants would provide that opportunity for more valuable public input.
Mr. Chair? If I could just kind of throw my two cents in on this as well. I mean, it is, it is somewhat disappointing, though, to that by policy, the Planning Commission wouldn't be involved in something that you would think would have a strategic impact on comprehensive planning. You know, I recall a year and a half ago, we were sitting around wondering, how are we going to bring more people into the commercial downtown area? You know, what impacts are things going to have on the commercial north and south of this particular intersection? And then, you know, now a, a reconfiguration of that intersection is going to have a huge impact on things that we were kind of a part of in some of that planning. And and we don't have an opportunity to either uh, you know, assist in the process, allow more opportunity for the public to become a part of the process. It's it's really unfortunate that there wasn't an opportunity to find a way to get the Planning Commission more involved in that. And I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Would it be possible to have uh one of the staff people go back and research the, the authorizing documents or the, the municipal code that that sets the Planning Commission up? And see how much room we have to move there on an official basis in addition to whatever informal assistance the commission may be involved with?
We can do that.
And I want to um reinforce what Mr. Meesmer said about the next steps in the shoreline development pro- um plan. If if this is anything like happened during the code development, we had fairly extensive discussions based on the staff's work in responding to the public input and making recommendations for us to discuss. We had a um, pretty, it pretty well was laid out, and I think we went through point by point to look at each of those. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And my thought is, is that we'll probably end up going um section by section, keeping in mind, there aren't a lot of changes or amendments to the SMP, but there are some very significant proposals that um we will need to dive into with the Planning Commission. And many of those were commented on. So you'll have an opportunity to see each and every one of the comments, responses to the comments, and any amendments to the drafts, and we'll have a long discussion on them.
Mr. Chair? Uh, Mr. Meesmer, I'd like to go back to the the question of 12th and Commercial. Uh, not just that intersection, but does the city, and I have not seen it, have a systematic plan or a strategy for identifying those intersections which need to be addressed as part of the transportation plan? I know uh, south here, or not that far south, but uh, you know, all of a sudden, the neighborhoods are talking about uh M and 32nd and what's going to happen there. Uh, is that going to be a roundabout? All kinds of options being discussed offline with absolutely no organizing principle whatsoever. Uh, but it's interesting to to follow some of that. But is there a systematic policy plan the city has where they think that is the option and the appropriate option? And then how is that design process driven? Either to make that work or choose another alternative?
Sure. Um, so you'll want to take a look at the 2016 comprehensive plan, and in the back of it, in one of the appendices, is the transportation plan.
Yes.
And that will give you a lot of information on, you know, some of the future projects. You'll also be able to find online our capital facilities plan, which also talks about various road projects and how they align those.
I I've read, I've seen both those, read both of those. I don't have them memorized yet, but I'm fairly good at doing that. A little frightening at times, what I do remember and what I forget. Uh, but the issue is, is there a strategic overview of that uh and how those link, and then how you step through the decision process? That's, that's my basic question.
Well, uh, yes, and I'm going to say yes. What we'll do is I'll get our uh city engineer in to give a presentation on the whole myriad of things.
Okay, that would be really appreciated.
Absolutely. Um, I'll also share with you, when we have projects come in, many of them require uh transportation, um, Level One Transportation Report, I think it is. And what that will do is that will determine the number of trips that are generated by the project, the level of service at each intersection and the level of service in the, um, you know, the general vicinity. And that will also determine what kind of improvements might be required at a specific intersection. So that's required um by our department for the projects. For instance, if if a 20-block subdivision goes in, they're going to do a traffic report. It's going to analyze intersections, uh, turning movements, et cetera, within five blocks probably of each side. And then that tells us what needs to happen.
Sure.
I think our city engineer would, I think, I think you all would really find some value in a presentation from our city engineer on all this. We'll put that together as soon as possible.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Um, any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Thank you, everybody, for your participation and your time. Um, we will close the meeting of the Planning Commission and reconvene at the next scheduled time, assuming we have work to do at that scheduled date.
Good night.